Man, it has been some really amazing time together. I'm super excited for all that we've learned and all the connections that we've made. We're almost done. I know that a lot of you are definitely excited about this next session, and then we'll have our closing remarks. But for now, I'm going to introduce our panelists. Then I have one quick announcement, and then we'll get into it. So first, I'd like to ask Tracy Elizabeth to come on up. She serves as Head of Family Safety and Developmental Health over at TikTok. Let's give it up for Tracy.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next, we have Dana Geltwardt. She's Head of Global Policy Programs at Instagram. Yeah, Dana. And then finally, we have Viraj Doshi, who's Platform Safety Lead over at Snapchat. So as I mentioned, I have a quick announcement, and so we'll switch to our next slide, because TikTok is asking for applications for their youth council. And so I wanted to throw up a QR code up there. And as we know, and has been emphasized by so many presenters and sessions, it is essential to not only validate, but also incorporate the voice of youth as we continue our work and try to make a difference when it comes to safety, security, privacy, and all of our other goals. So with that said, please don't hesitate to think about the youth that you shepherd, that you care for, and perhaps they are a great fit to apply to this council. If you have any questions, I'm sure you can also reach out perhaps through that form, and you can talk to me and probably Tracy as well. Sounds great. All right, I'm gonna have a seat, and let's get into this.
All right, thank you.
I'll start by saying that many times when I hang out with adults, educators, youth professionals, they have a very one-sided perspective of companies. And that makes me a little bit sad, because I've worked with companies for a number of years, and I've gotten to know a number of amazing trust and safety professionals who of course care about their jobs, but they also care about people. You know, they care about individuals, they have children, they have nephews, they have nieces, and they're highly involved in doing what they can to truly, truly safeguard these youth on these platforms. So I don't want them to not get a fair shake. I want them to be able to articulate what they're up to, because it is a lot, and it incorporates a multitude of disciplines. You know, I think of course about the social sciences. We also think about computer sciences, but then I think about education. I think about the medical profession. And so truly, they seek the input in the council of a number of stakeholders in order to make their decisions as it relates to policy, programming, as I mentioned, education, product development, engineering, et cetera. And I love that, because as we all know, that's how we can produce the best products and services. So with that, my first question for each is to, again, I'd love for you to introduce yourself again, even though I know it's on the slides, and to just kind of share what a typical day in a typical week is for you. And so Tracy, I'll start with you.
Okay, thank you, and thank you so much for being here. This has been fantastic experience. I'm Dr. Tracy Elizabeth. I'm the Head of Family Safety and Developmental Health at TikTok. A typical day for me at TikTok is, let me put it like this, there is no typical day. And so we really do, I wake up every morning.
Oh, no, you took my answer.
Because it's so authentic.
I think it's across the board for tech companies.
Yeah, yeah, and I just think that like we're always ready to learn something new and to take on like whatever the day's challenge is. But my team specifically is responsible for designing and enforcing the policies to help keep teens safe on our platform. A little bit of background about me personally is that I started my career as an elementary school teacher, totally fell in love with kids. And in that experience, I actually figured out that there were ways in which we could use media to enrich social, emotional, and academic development in young people. So I ended up going back to graduate school, got a degree from the Harvard Graduate School of Education, shout out to HUGZI, but a degree in prevention science to think about what are our risk outcomes in young people, and how can we design policies, products, et cetera, to help predict, prevent, or mitigate those risk outcomes? Went back, got my doctorate, and studied adolescent development with a focus on media. So I've had a really wonderful opportunity to then leverage those skills and knowledge at TikTok, where as many of our colleagues here have talked about, like we lean into that evidence-based approach for what do the data say? What are experts say? And every single day is a new day, but we're leaning on like what do folks like Samir and others advise and tell us so that we can act in the best interest of young people?
And Dana, I'll definitely also share some of your background as well, if you don't mind.
Yeah, absolutely. So hi, everyone, I'm Dana Geltwardt. I am the Head of Global Policy Programs at Instagram. I've been at Instagram for seven years. So every day is different, and every day is different for seven years straight. Never a dull moment, so it definitely keeps you on your toes. But I started my career in the nonprofit space, have always been on the side of young people, looking at youth empowerment, so working on college campus with sexual violence prevention and advocacy around sexual violence prevention, to working at the UN, to looking at adolescent girls' mental health, physical health, access to health services, birth certificates, documentation. And then I found myself at Instagram to figure out how we can best protect young people and their well-being. And I do that in two key ways. So similar to Tracy and probably Viraj, I work with leading experts like Samir in child psychology, digital literacy, youth mental health, also leaders from civil society. And I bring them in closer to the products that we are developing to keep young people safe and to also support families and parents. And we do that because we know we don't know everything, and we need to make sure we have our finger on the pulse of the latest research, the latest insights. And a lot of these community partners are working with young people in a more regular, high-touch way than we are at a tech company. So that's one side. And then on the other side is working with that same group of people to develop these really creative, innovative programs that reach young people and parents offline. So how are we working with different groups to make sure we are educating young people on the tools that we're providing? Building them is just one thing. We have to make sure that teens are using them and they're actually hitting and fulfilling their needs. So that can run the gamut. It could mean building a digital literacy badge with the Girl Scouts of America to make sure that more than 30,000 girls have gone through this really intensive digital literacy program to confidently navigate online spaces. It could mean working with the JED Foundation, which is a mental health organization, on a program that's called Pressure to be Perfect, because we understand some young people may feel pressure to look or act or be a certain way when they show up online. And so we want to help young people check in with their emotions, understand the tools that are available to them, to make sure the time they're spending online is meaningful and supportive, and then also know when they need to escalate it to a trusted adult or someone they care about. So it's been a really exciting seven years. And yeah, every time I'm around other folks across Snapchat and TikTok, I always love learning from the work that they're developing.
I love that. Thank you, Dana. And Viraj?
Yeah, hi, everyone. My name's Viraj Doshi, and I'm the Platform Safety Lead at Snapchat. Two quick things about me. I'm from Raleigh, North Carolina, so for me, it's really exciting that the World Anti-Bullying Forum is here. Just fantastic that it's being hosted in Raleigh and that UNC is participating. I was really excited to hear that when Samir told me. And then two, I'm one month in into my current role at Snapchat. So I'm currently in learn mode, but I'm sure Dana and Tracy can say, you know, you don't get a lot of leeway time when you work in tech. So I'm in learn mode, but you know, it's been a really great experience in this past one month, because I've gotten to see the different teams internally at Snapchat and how we're working on trust and safety issues. But also, you know, I really appreciate being in an environment like this where I get to learn from all the different experts and all the different voices that are here in this room. I was just at a session earlier today, hearing about teachers and kind of the work that teachers can do in the classroom to stop bullying and just learn so much in that 30 minutes. So really grateful to be here. I would say for my role at Snapchat and my team, the Platform Safety Team, it's not too different than what Tracy and Dana had both said as well. It's always interesting to hear how our work translates to different platforms, because different platforms do different things. But some of the common overlaps would be, one, we try to raise awareness through programs and campaigns about online safety risks that we're seeing. So we do that through, you know, online in-app tools that we can kind of create and own. But we also partner with organizations to run advertising campaigns. So for example, with the Internet Watch Foundation in the UK, we recently ran a campaign called Girls Out Loud, just to kind of make targeting teenage girls to make sure that they're educated about the risks of sharing nudes online. What are the consequences of that? How can you spot harassment early on? And what can you do to report that across any platform? So we are really happy to partner with an organization like that. Two, I would say our team really focuses on advising our internal teams on products and policies. So something I'd love to talk about later today in the session is our family center and kind of the tools that are incorporated there and how we develop those tools. And the third, which I personally find the most gratifying, is doing engagement with the voices and the folks in the room here. So educators, parents, teens, researchers, academics, you know, users. We want to hear, our team wants to make sure that we're hearing the feedback and the criticism, the concerns that you guys have about whether you're a user on Snapchat, whether your child's on Snapchat, whether you know a young person who's on Snapchat and you're concerned. We want to make sure that we're an outlet to be able to hear that feedback and then to be able to translate that feedback into policy and product changes internally. And then separate from that, we also want to make sure that we're an education resource. How can we better educate parents who oftentimes aren't on Snapchat? You know, I recognize that a lot of times, parents are, you guys may be on Instagram, maybe on Facebook, maybe on TikTok. Snapchat may not be an app that you're familiar with. So how do we make sure parents understand what Snapchat is, how to use it, what their kids are seeing? And so we're always looking to learn and adapt. And just want to say that, you know, we know that these risks are very, very real. They aren't theoretical. They're impacting kids every day. And so it's just really rewarding to be in a room like this, to have a role like the one I have, to be able to learn and iterate with all of you constantly.
I love that. Thank you, Viraj. So obviously, World Anti-Bullying Forum, we care about bullying, we care about harassment, we care about other forms of interpersonal abuse. And so this is part of your responsibilities in your own positions. I just love to hear, I'll start with you, Tracy. What is your platform doing? And what have they done, let's say historically? What are they doing currently? And then perhaps, if you're able to share, what do you hope to do short-term and long-term as it relates to these problematic behaviors?
Love it. Okay, thank you so much for the question. And it is really nice to be on stage with people who have such shared passions and interests. Okay, well, so we're doing so much. First of all, I wanted to say that TikTok is a place that authentically is invested in promoting joy, connecting folks with their community, right? Like being a safe space where that safety is like psychologically authentic. And so you can read in our community guidelines and also within our policies, like we do not tolerate hate, harassment, unkindness, meanness. It's not, that's not tolerated on TikTok. And so I just want to make that really clear, and we try to make that clear for our account holders. I'm an academic myself, and so I do really understand how important it is to consult with our external scholars. So we have ongoing conversations, not only with the internal folks who we've hired. We've hired teachers, right? Prevention scientists, clinical psychologists, adolescent developmentists. That's not a word, but it is now. But also, we consult heavily with external folks. And one thing that's very important is to recognize that particularly, and I'll focus a lot on youth, right? Like teens are my specialty. And what we know is that the lines of hashtag IRL, so real life and then digital spaces, are blurry, and particularly for teens. They don't see that difference as clearly as some of these well-intentioned adults like myself may. And so we invest in understanding, how does bullying, right? Bullying behaviors, what inspires or like triggers bullying? How does that manifest in real life? And then how might those behaviors manifest differently in digital spaces like TikTok? And then also, we think a lot about, are there differences between the ways in which young people might engage with or respond to bullying behaviors that's different from adults? And that's where my responsibility comes in. So we're thinking deeply about the ways in which we can enhance and fine-tune our policies to be teen-specific as opposed to adult-specific. But we also have, this is, I've got more to this answer, so y'all buckle your seatbelts, okay? Because I'm going to say a little bit more. So we also have a bunch of tools, right? So we have, we know that bullying is unique to individuals. And what that means is that there's not necessarily a one-size-fits-all. And that's why we have things like the ability to block or turn off comments completely from a video. Or even more specifically, you could block a specific keyword phrase that's within a comment from your video. And that's really important to young people, because we don't, you know, like one word will mean nothing to one teen, but be really humiliating or upsetting to another. So empowering teens with the ability to manage and control those comments at such a specific level. We also have, you know, the option to report comments. If you see something or feel something uncomfortable, you can report that. Or you can report that the user who may have made that comment, and an investigation will take place to look more into that account. I just wanted to just shout out one more thing, is that we have like a kindness prompt. So research shows that just giving folks a couple of seconds to kind of think about their behaviors before following through really helps, and particularly with teens, nudge them towards like making better decisions. So with our kindness prompt, if you type in something to a comment that we may perceive as potentially mean or unspirited, there are little, a menu will pop up, it's like, hey, do you want to rethink that and possibly say something different or rephrase? And then we've seen that that gives folks just enough opportunity to realize that maybe they might want to reshape their words that are more in the spirit of intent of kindness that we're promoting on the platform. I could go on, but I'm going to respect the time of my colleagues and throw it back over to y'all.
Yeah, I love that, introducing a little bit of cognitive dissonance, so they pause and they consider, you know, what are the implications of what I'm saying? And does it really reflect the image that I want to portray?
Yeah, exactly.
Dana, what comes to your mind?
Yes, so similar to TikTok, we have kind of the baseline tools that you would expect, right? Yes, you can block people, you can report comments, you can report accounts. When we talk with teens, though, we found that a lot of times those actions felt really intense for them to take. It felt like potentially it escalated a situation. These are people that they know. It's someone on their basketball team, it's someone in their math class. And while we don't tell someone when they've been blocked or when something they've posted has been reported, you know, kids are really smart, frustratingly so, and they can find a way to figure out that you've been blocked. And so we spent a lot of time talking with teens, talking with experts, looking at the research, and we came up with a tool called Restrict. And so this is a way to more stealthily take control of your account and limit unwanted interactions without the bully or the person who's displaying bullying behavior ever knowing. So the way that it works, say that in the very unlikely scenario, Samir is bullying me on Instagram, I could add him to Restrict. And Samir could comment on my post as if nothing has changed. That's different than blocking, right? If I block Samir, he can't see my account, he can't interact with my content.
And I might rage.
Yeah, and rage. So now Samir can comment on my post just as normal. The difference here is that I can see the comment, Samir can see the comment. Tracy, Viraj, they can't see the comment. So it actually puts that young person in the driver's seat to say, okay, I can approve that comment if it's innocuous. If it doesn't bother me, it doesn't feel like it's harassing me. I can say, okay, that can go on my post. Or it just kind of gives you a way to control the situation a little bit more. Also, when I add Samir, this big bully, to Restrict, it means that his DMs to me are put into a different folder, so I don't have to be confronted with some of the content that may be harmful or hurtful to me. And also, he won't see when I've read his comments. So again, or his DMs, rather. So again, he can send me a DM, and I can read it, so I can feel like I'm empowered with all of the information. I know what's going on, but it doesn't give the power back to Samir to know that maybe I've been affected by it and it hurts me. I've never felt like more of a celebrity when I told a local Boys and Girls Clubs about this tool. They like literally cheered, and I was like, I'm not the engineers or product designers. I did not build this. So that's something that we're doing. And then nudges, as you mentioned, huge. I heard this in some of the presentations yesterday, but we've been trying to figure out how we can nudge users to take a beat, consider what they're saying, and to potentially say something different. So we, for many years, have had a comment warning. So our AI will detect whether you're about to comment something that is similar to other comments that have been reported for bullying and harassment. And originally, the notice was, hey, you've posted something that might go against our community guidelines. And it was effective. It gave people a moment to pause, and some people edited their comments, some people deleted it. But I don't think it's a secret that online interactions, it can be a little bit more difficult to sense empathy. When you're having an in-person conversation, there's tone, there's body language, there's touch, there's posture, and you lose some of that online. And so what we decided to do was to actually make that prompt, that nudge, to talk about the potential harm it might do. So now it says that you are posting something that could be potentially hurtful to someone. And ideally, that's introducing into that commenter's mind the realization that there's someone on the other side of the screen. Because what our research found was that oftentimes, people don't know that they're saying something that's cruel. They might think it's funny, and they don't know that it might embarrass the person they're saying it to, or, you know, they've just entirely misjudged kind of the impact of those words. And so this has been a really good and effective intervention, and we've found that within a one-week period, 50% of people who saw this nudge actually edited their comment to make it more kind, or they deleted it.
Yeah, that's outstanding. When I chat sometimes with educators and parents, they say to me, we need the social media platforms to do more, we need them to do more. But then when I press them just a little bit, you know, if they have any good ideas or if they'd like to share, you know, some sort of, you know, thought they had related to that, they just, they can't. My point here is that it's really hard to innovate. And so I appreciate the fact that these three companies, they are taking the time to try to figure out new solutions, for example, Restrict and these nudges, to try to, yeah, push people towards positive behaviors, positive choices. There's research done where there's only about a few percent, let's say 3% to 5%, who are chronic problem individuals on social media. And the rest, well, it could be me, it could be you. We're having a bad day, and we're cranky, we're irritable, we snap at someone, we respond emotionally, we respond spontaneously. That nudge would help me, it absolutely would, cause me to pause, cause me to think through what I'm about to do, and hopefully I backpedal. Hopefully I temper the statement, or I don't say it at all. So these are the sorts of developments that I want to see in the field in trust and safety. And I know that the research teams on their sides are continuing to work on them. Viraj?
Yep. It's so interesting to hear what Dana's saying. I spent five years at Meta working with Dana on some of your issues. So it's just so great to hear her talk about all this. I would say at the baseline, similar to what Tracy and Dana said, we also have what you all probably already are aware of, community guidelines, right? So community guidelines that explicitly say, we do not want and we do not allow bullying, harassment, abuse on our platform. And, you know, Snapchat doesn't want that, none of these, none of the platforms want it. And so we have to make explicit design decisions in terms of how our platform is created, the different tools and products on our platform, to make sure that we're fostering a safe community. I think Snapchat's a little bit different than other social media companies in that it's designed from its conception was to foster real conversations or conversations among real friends. And what I mean by that, by friends that you actually know in real life. So less of an emphasis on necessarily gaining followers or likes, but about allowing friends to express themselves in different and creative ways to their existing friends and existing relationships. So I think that different dynamic just means that there's different problems, and there's different opportunities for Snapchat to lean in on and to learn about and to iterate a little bit. So we know that if our users, specifically our teenage users, don't feel safe on the platform, they're not going to feel as safe to express themselves to their friends, to take advantage of the different filters that we have or the creative tools that we have online. So it's a really big point of emphasis for us to constantly be thinking about safety and design. And so we apply, and I think this is similar across many platforms, a safety and privacy by design principle, in that we incorporate all of these thoughts and processes and research and the insights that we know from the very beginning of when a product is being designed. So it doesn't come in at the very end, it doesn't come in once we've gotten feedback. It's now baked into the process when our engineering, our product, our policy, our research teams all get together, because there's a launch that we want to do. So it's baked in from the beginning and incorporated throughout. And then even after we launch something, what our team is really focused in on is making sure we're taking that feedback that we're getting from users, from surveys, but also just from, you know, qualitative conversations that we're having with experts, to making sure that we're making changes. So two things come to mind there. The first would be Snapchat recommends mutual friends. So suggest people that you may know and you may want to add as a friend. There's a minimum threshold for the amount of mutual friends before we suggest someone. Based off of feedback that we got and research that we did ourselves, what we've done for 13- to 17-year-old users is we've raised that mutual friend threshold to a much higher number than our other users, our other older users. Because we want to make sure that our young users are connecting with people that they actually know in real life, and they're having conversations with people that they actually know. An added layer of protection on top of that is if they actively add someone without our prompt, but we recognize that they don't have any mutual friends on Snapchat or in their phone book, we'll put a prompt saying, hey, making sure that you want to add this person, because you don't have any mutual connections with this person. So we're constantly trying to figure out ways that we can also do a little bit, the nudges that Dana and Tracy were talking about, just in a different context. The other thing that I had mentioned here is just in terms of how Snapchat was designed at its very beginning, it's, Snapchat treats, we treat our private, the private one-to-one communication that people have as people typically think about Snapchat, very differently than the more public spaces where, which can reach a much wider audience. So that's to say, where there's two spaces on, if you have Snapchat and you open it up, there's two different surfaces on that Snapchat app called Discover and Spotlight. And so those are kind of more public-facing content. But the difference between that and our more private-facing content is that content is all pre-moderated, it goes through automated reviews. It's oftentimes content that, from sources that Snapchat has pre-vetted. So we know, we feel much more comfortable about that content reaching a wider audience. And the reason why we put in those controls is we want to make sure that no harmful behavior, no harmful content goes quote-unquote viral. So those are some of the design decisions that can go into how we create the app to kind of help and foster a more safe community. But, you know, it's constantly changing, it's constantly iterating, and, you know, we're constantly learning from our industry peers as well to see what's worked for other folks and what'll work for our contacts and our users as well.
Can I say something unsolicited and off the cuff?
Please.
Just from hearing all of y'all, the comms guy's looking at me like, don't, what are you gonna say? I'm just kidding. So just hearing from all y'all, I think another thing that, when we think from a social development perspective, I think is really important, is that we are all very heavily invested in how can we protect users or empower those on our platforms to protect themselves, which is critically important. There is this other piece of the puzzle that when I speak with parents I talk about, which is also just like being mindful of your own behavior and interactions, right? And just like doing what you can. We heard from Tammy at Roblox just a few minutes ago about like civility, but there is this like other layer of our own personal responsibilities to be empathic, loving humans in digital spaces. So I can't remember which, there was a scholar here during this conference who was talking about essentially what I describe as like the culture of cool or like the capital of like having like a lot of social credibility. And that means that, you know, maybe there's like that cool kid in high school or like an influencer. And if we can tap into like those folks who have a lot of social capital, TikTok has a hashtag create kindness campaign where we did exactly this, where it's like we leaned into folks that had a lot of social credibility and said, can you go out there and just share like ways in which you, number one, have, like you've been victims of bullying behavior, and there's different ways in which you've navigated that, and then you've taken extra steps to like push kindness back into platforms? So I think that's another really interesting thing and something that we're excited to innovate. And I hear from my colleagues at other platforms doing the same, where it's like, what can we also do beyond just like those protective instincts, but also those progressive, let's push the kindness out there, right?
I love that. Can I?
Please, jump in.
Okay, great. I love that. We think a ton about social norming, especially among creators, especially on Instagram, where you are connecting with friends and family. But there is a really robust and colorful creator ecosystem, very similar to TikTok. And so we've been folding in some like social norming winks into a lot of the products we do, like Quiet Mode is an example, around time management, where when you turn this tool on, it's meant to really protect you during times where you have to focus. So sleep, we know is very critical. There are a lot of researchers in this room who can probably speak on that.
can probably speak on that far more eloquently than I, but sleep is really important. So, we launched Quiet Mode, so you can turn off all notifications during that time. But, the social norming piece was that when someone DMs you during that time, we send an auto reply telling them that you're in quiet mode. And kind of our theory of change there is that you see that, and then you realize, "Oh, I probably shouldn't be scrolling on Instagram at 2:00 AM, maybe I should turn on Quiet Mode, and maybe that's something that I should do." And then, on the creator component that you mentioned, and the campaigns, something we launched last year was this, this Well-being Creator Collective. Again, realizing the power of these creators on the platform, and what an outsized influence they have on the behavior of young people. We worked with three researchers out of USC, Pepperdine, Wellesley's Digital Youth Wellness Lab, and we identified 50 creators who are already putting out really positive, feel-good, supportive content. And we decided, okay, let's put some expert insight behind that. What's the type of messaging that most positively impacts young people? What really do we know from the science, what's evidenced back to say, "Oh, when someone is exposed to this messaging, or this framing, or this, these types of visuals, it has a positive effect on how they view themselves and how they view others." And so, we encourage them to create thousands and thousands of reels on our platform, that, exactly that, trying to encourage kind of more acceptance and putting out this type of content that young people really need to see.
Yeah, we talk a lot about their vulnerabilities, but they're also vulnerable to be inspired, and equipped, and empowered, and encouraged to do epic things. And as they look at other youth, whether they're influencers, or those with maybe a few less followers, I think it still can make such a powerful difference. So, thinking about your educational campaigns, I want to hear about your safety center, and I want to hear about various methods and mechanisms you have used, some with more success than others, to try to reach different populations. And it could be school nurses and pediatricians, it could be mental health professionals, could be educators and teachers, could even be law enforcement. I know that you've tried to reach so many stakeholders, and I'd love to hear what has worked, what you've learned through the process with some of the more unsuccessful approaches, things like that.
Okay, all right, let's see.
Well, actually, let me start with Raj.
Oh, yeah.
And then we'll go that way.
Sure, 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 sure. Yeah, so happy to talk about that. So, we launched, there's a couple of different things that we do in terms of trying to educate, and trying to do more outreach, because we see that that's a really critical role that we can play, in making sure, like I think Dana, you mentioned it, we can create all the tools and resources, but if people don't know about it, what's the point, really? So, there's a couple of different things that we do in that space. One, last year, we launched our family center. And earlier this year, we launched a slew of new tools and kind of controls for parents to use via the family center. And so, what our family center really is designed for is to spark and kind of inspire conversations for parents to have with their kids in real life about their use of social media. You know, I think I've heard in a lot of research, and I'm sure folks in this room have heard as well, is, you know, parents or caregivers who can kind of engage in that conversation, as difficult as it may be, with their kids, typically leads to better outcomes for both sides, both in terms of feeling comfortable, of understanding what your kids are doing online, and kids knowing that they can trust their parents to go to them when they want to report something, if something bad has happened. And so, for us, our family center is really designed, again, based off of research and what we found from the broader community, is how can we give parents the tools and the education that they need? I think parents are in a tough spot, educators are in a tough spot, caregivers are in a tough spot, there's so many different platforms, kids are using all of them very fluidly, scrolling through seven different apps, and so, parents are in a tough choice, and you have to understand how, you know, how do you use all these different platforms? And so, one thing that we've tried to do is make it as simple as possible in the family center. So, a couple of things that we've done recently is, parents can now see, if they connect with their kids on Snapchat, they can see who their kids' friends are on Snapchat, they can see who they've messaged, they can't see the content of the message, because we think it's really important to keep a balance of our teens' privacy and autonomy as well, but they can see who they've been messaging. They can report things if they see something that they think is awry, and they can, they can place some content controls on some of the more public-facing material that I was discussing in our Discover and Spotlight platforms. So, they can kind of control the experience that their teenagers may have on Snapchat to some degree. A key element of that, though, that we found, is that we, and it's an important distinction that we made here when we launched Family Center, was, we wanted to make sure teens could see what their parents could see on Family Center. Because we wanted to make sure everyone was on the same page, again, just to kind of foster that trust, to encourage that conversation to happen in real life, and for everyone to be on the same page, so that we can have better outcomes at the end. And then, something that what Tracy and Dana were both saying in terms of like, in-app education, right? So, you know, while Family Center is really targeting parents and caregivers, you know, we want to make sure that we're targeting the teens where they actually are, which is, you know, on these apps, on Snapchat. And so, we have two dedicated channels in our Discovery platform, one called Here For You, one called Snapshot Safety, both of which kind of provide resources for teens who are experiencing maybe some stress, some mental, some mental problems, bullying problems, harassment problems, depending on kind of what they're searching, they can go to these resources that exist on the app. And what we found to be most helpful is making sure that the content that's there isn't necessarily content of, you know, a research paper or anything like that, that we found that informed the design, but it's actually, you know, if it's not a creator, it's another teenager talking about how they use Snapchat, how they take breaks, how they could spot bad behavior, and what they did about it, how they found reporting tools to be useful or not useful. So, I, there's one that I used earlier today that reminded me of Take a Break on Instagram, it was on our Here For You page of just a meditation break, and it was just like, really calm music for 20 seconds, and I used it, and it was amazing. And so, there's always things like that, that we're trying to put on the platform to make sure they're reaching the users while they're using the app, depending on kind of what they're searching for and how they're using the app as well.
Bite-sized portions.
Yep.
Perfect. Dana?
Well, we, I mean, just listening to all of the tools, I can see why it's overwhelming for parents. There is a lot, and even as educators, principals in the rooms, teachers, community leaders, there's so much. And so, I think that's something that's really heartening, but probably something that can also feel very intense and overwhelming for parents, and figuring out how to ease some of that burden for a lot of parents, I'm sure, is really top of mind. You know, we also have a family center where we have a lot of expert resources, we talk about all of these tools, we talk about kind of the context that surrounds them, because just lobbing a tool at a young person during a moment of crisis is probably not going to be really effective. So, trying to figure out how we can support parents as they sit down with their teens and have these, these really collaborative, non-judgmental, supportive conversations is something we're really focused on. We also, we've done some research, and we've tried to figure out, you know, who do parents listen to? Shocker, it might not be us, it might not be Instagram, or TikTok, or Snap. And so, we've been working with a lot of parenting creators who have a lot of credibility, a lot of reach among other parents, and we're trying to do sort of like a train-the-trainer rattle, where we work with these parents, we tell them about these tools, so they can help tell other parents, so that they can then understand how they can better support their teen whenever there's kind of an uncomfortable situation, or their teen comes to them with something they want to talk about.
How many of you who are parents follow a parent influencer, and you've learned various things about maybe dealing with discipline, or, you know, encouraging the pursuit of education or anything like that? I know I definitely follow a few.
Everyone with their hands up, I'm going to come to you after and figure out the handle and who it is.
The best of the best.
Because I want to work with them.
And Tracy?
Okay, yes. So, first of all, as a mother myself, with a young girl, well, my daughter's eight, and she's using all sorts of different apps, right? And one thing that I make myself do, even though it can be frustrating, and sometimes like very challenging, is I use all the apps that she uses. So, just like you were saying before, yes, absolutely, I think as a parent, you can be really overwhelmed by these tools, there's these guides, right? They're all really important bits of information and resources that can be helpful. However, the most effective way to make those resources actually make sense is to jump in and use those platforms yourself. What I tell my friends, parents, is like, "Know the rules and use the tools." So, if you don't have a TikTok account, and you're worried about what your teen is doing on TikTok, I really recommend you set up a TikTok account, and get to know TikTok and everything that it's all about, and understand the safety features. But I do want to directly answer that original question. So, what have we done, and what are we doing? We have a safety center, and within the safety center, we have a guardian's guide. That guardian's guide is specifically designed to both show in text, but also video tutorials that demonstrate for caregivers, parents, guardians, how to use TikTok, and how to set safety features. So, there's efforts in there to like, reach different types of learners, right, within that guardian's guide. There's also a bullying prevention guide, that I think bullying, right, can be really elusive, it's sometimes not clear how to know when someone may be a victim of bullying behaviors, or how to respond. So, we have a guide that helps try to give that information to families and to teens. We have spoken with teens, and have tips from teens, and those tips are very generally things like, "I do want trusted, safe adults in my life to help me understand these rules." I welcome that, I want that. I want to be able to talk to an adult or someone about what I'm experiencing online. However, please don't freak out if I tell you something that makes you uncomfortable, or that I'm telling you makes me uncomfortable. Like, teens want to feel like they can have a safe, psychologically safe conversation. So, in the spirit of learning from teens, we are, TikTok is heavily invested in learning more from teens, which is why I know Samir mentioned at the beginning of this talk, but we are heavily investing and actively recruiting for a youth advisory council. And I am so excited about this, because that's exactly what we want. We're going to invest in the experts. The experts are teens who are using our platform, and I think the ways in which they can really get immersive with us, and advise on like, what authentically works for them, or how they'd like, or recommend that we adjust either policies or products, we're going to be very actively listening as thought partners.
That's perfect. When I talk to parents, honestly, they recoil when I suggest that they should co-use the app in order to get more familiar with it. And to be honest, I can understand that, they're very busy, and they're like, "Dear heavens, I just don't have the time, or the margin, or the energy to learn this." And plus, I think that it's kind of, I don't know, not so productive, isn't really helping them level up when it comes to their academics. And so, my next question for you is, if someone comes to you with negative sentiments about your platform, can you share with them, or can you share with this audience, any specific stories about positive use? Whether you've seen youth do epic things in this direction, whether it's education, or social justice, or anything like that, using your platforms? Maybe some stories come to your mind? Raj? Anything that comes to your mind in terms of Snap, because, and let me give you a couple more seconds. When people might think of Snap, or Instagram, or TikTok, they might focus only on, okay, it's meeting entertainment needs, and it's meeting social needs. And yes, of course, we have those needs, but there's so many other needs that a child and a teenager needs to meet, and feels like if they're only on those apps, then that's not really accomplishing what we're trying to do as we develop them and they raise them. But, what I'm trying to convey here is that's not true. There's a lot of benefits, academic, educational, social, et cetera.
Yeah, totally. I think a couple of things come to mind there. One, I think what we've seen through our research, and also just kind of how teens have been using our platforms, is they want the tools to be able to spot this behavior, but they also are the best kind of ambassadors to kind of step in if they see their friend, someone that they know going through something, you know, oftentimes, I mean, this reflects real life, right? Sometimes, a parent stepping in isn't always the best thing, sometimes a friend stepping in can be, can be the most impactful thing. So, we've seen some really kind of great, great research, and kind of great practical use of how different teens are using the same tools that we've all kind of discussed today, to step in and to use their voice to kind of step in for their friend, and to kind of say, "Hey, are you okay? You know, you don't seem, you know, something seems a little bit off." There's different like, resources that we've seen them kind of create organically, you know, through their stories, or kind of through their snaps, that we've kind of leveraged content from to say, "Hey, this makes a ton of sense, maybe this makes sense for us to put to a larger audience via those two more public platforms." So, I think what we're always really fascinated by is hearing from our teenage users about how they're using the platforms, because oftentimes, they're using it in much more innovative ways than we could ever think about. But specifically in the context of safety, we know that friend-to-friend kind of conversations can be the most impactful in addressing some of, you know, bullying, harassment, anything that our teenagers are facing. And so, it's always really inspiring to hear how we can leverage those stories, and kind of the off-the-cuff things that they're doing, and how we can kind of implement that into our tooling systems itself.
So, you use Spotlight, and you use Discover to kind of showcase awesome moments when youth are creating content that could possibly be beneficial and inspirational to the wider community.
Yeah, definitely. So, like in our, there's a channel called Here For You, so, again, like Samir's saying, it's bite-sized content. Again, a lot of times, we're leveraging regular teenagers' voices of how they use these things. And then, our more curated one, which Snapchat owns, is called Safety Snapshot. And so, for that one, we create the content, but we learn and we listen to a lot of what teenagers are saying that they need, and then we create that content itself. Just this past week, we created and uploaded a bunch of content around how to spot sexual harassment early on, how can you spot grooming early on, what are those things in the first place? So, we think it's important to kind of make sure that we're educating all of our users about that, but in an appropriate way, and in a way that they can actually digest, which oftentimes is bite-sized, and oftentimes in the voice of their peers.
And they might be getting that from each of you, from educators, from professionals, from parents, but the fact that they're on their app, and it's captive audience?
Yep.
Absolutely need to feed them that way, too.
Yep.
Dana?
Well, this question is exactly why I started working at Instagram. I had been using technology to mobilize young people, and social media to mobilize young people to make change within their governments, within their communities, and I saw how effective it was for community building. And now I'm here, and I work on safety and youth well-being, and all these things where we're trying to clear some of these uncomfortable or negative experiences, so we can protect kind of the beauty, and the color, and the vibrancy of some of those other connections and community-building experiences. In terms of a specific example, I, so for the past seven years, I've been very involved in the body acceptance, body liberation movement, that's really vibrant on Instagram, and the eating disorders community. And one of the things that I was really heartened to see happen among young people during the outset of COVID, was that a lot of individuals were back in their homes, or separated from their communities, and unfortunately, that is where some eating disorders, or disordered eating can thrive. And we saw young people coming onto our platforms and hosting Instagram Lives, which, like, we did not think anyone used Instagram Live at all, and then COVID happened, and everyone was using Instagram Live, and we like desperately put a bunch of engineers onto that product. But, they would go onto Instagram Live, and they were hosting Eat With Me sessions, where you could join, and if you had any anxiety or concerns about eating, or if you were in an unsupportive home, or a home where maybe you had a lot of pressures around that, you could actually join, and it was normalized to just kind of sit with someone and eat with them. And so, that was something that I saw young people do, where I don't think we could have ever imagined, we certainly didn't build Instagram Live for that, for that purpose, for that use, but we saw it, and it was just this really incredible, critical way for young people to connect during that time.
Yeah, and supported their well-being and their mental health. Outstanding. Tracy?
So, my doctoral studies and research all focus on the promotion of social and academic development in teens using media. And so, I've been really proud of the work that we've been able to develop and advance at TikTok in that capacity. And so, I'll give you a couple of examples, and one is from a social development perspective, finding communities. What we've learned from both our teen and adult communities, or account holders, is that they may have had feelings of loneliness, right? Like, we have folks who, as an example, have family members who are suffering from dementia. They feel alone, they're not sure what to do. We now know that there's this community on TikTok where there's a lot of support there, and so we've heard all about how that helps them have resources, but also feel less alone. So, connecting with like, unique and really important communities is one really important social and emotional opportunity. Another is family bonding. So, this is absolutely precious, I've seen it, I've seen it, you know, at conferences and other places I've gone for TikTok, and I've also seen it in my personal life, where like, sure, you know, there might be a 15-second dance that you see of the 17-year-old on TikTok, but what you don't know, that parents will tell you, is that dance took four and a half hours over the weekend, you know what I mean? With like, mom and dad, and the family dog, all trying to help like, practice. And so, there's all sorts of really- And so there's all sorts of really nice like family bonding that's happening that is behind the scenes from these videos that are created. But then the third, and this one is like, I think, under-valued and critical. And that's that for TikTok, you can both consume, right? Yes, you can watch videos, but you also create them. So if you think about like Seymour Pepper, there's like this constructivist, constructionist philosophies that talk about how like building and doing or creating something also builds cognitive capacities. And think about how complicated it is to like create even a 30-second video. You have to have a plan, have a story, scaffold in from one moment to another. Use these technological tools, pull in the songs, right? Pull in the color or whatever graphics. And those are really, really amazing ways to develop sophisticated, complex thinking, which is an academic skill that will bode particularly this younger generation quite well as they move into their careers and new fields.
Yeah, and as I've emphasized throughout the day, as we move deeper and deeper into an information-based society and economy, as they use each of these platforms, they are growing in their skill sets, you know, when it comes to manipulation of content and media, you know, design, aesthetics, the development and delivery of their messages. I mean, they're leveling up in all of these ways and I truly think it will serve them professionally down the road. My very last question for each of you is, let's say you're in an elevator with an educator and you can decide whether it's lower school, middle school, or upper school or high school. And they said to you that so many of my students are on your app, but I'm really nervous, I'm really confused. I really don't even know where to start in terms of coming alongside of them and assisting them. How would you encourage them? What sort of words of wisdom would you give them? Raj?
Yeah, great question. I probably would, my conversation would probably go beyond just the elevator. So much to say there.
How many floors?
Yeah, yeah. How many floors do we have?
Empire State.
Yeah, yeah. I think the first thing I would say, and I was thinking about this while we were talking about, you know, there's so many different platforms, so many different family centers, safety centers, guidelines, videos for parents and educators to watch. I think the thing to note here is, you know, companies, and I can speak, I can say, I just came from Meta, but I can just say on Snapchat, I'm sure for TikTok as well, you know, there's a lot of proactive measures that these companies are taking as well. So for Snapchat, for example, there are engineering teams that are working on proactive measures to take down content proactively. So we're not dependent on reactive reports. We're not dependent on users reporting bullying material or certain content guideline offensive material. Our engineering systems are able to track that and take it down proactively. So two days ago, we launched our latest transparency report and 98% of all child sexual abuse and imagery material is taken down by our proactive measures. Now, that still leaves a lot of room for improvement. That 2% is still a lot of room for improvement. But I think the first thing I would say is that we're in this together, right? So, you know, we have the engineering side, we have the technical side. We're here, we're building those things, we're trying to get those better. Two, we're trying, we're here also, and we're here to kind of hear your feedback. We want to know kind of what things you're struggling with. Is it just understanding how the app works? Is it, you understand how the app works, but you don't understand the tooling of it or it's very difficult to do reporting as an educator versus as a parent? How do you, as an educator, talk to your student versus how do you talk to the parent? What are the kind of the challenges that you're facing? Because we're really, really open to that feedback and we can, you know, relatively quickly, depending on the product and depending on the team, work on solutions relatively quickly. So I would say, I think the first two things is that we're here with you in this journey together. We're learning a lot, a lot from our users and the parents and the caregivers. And the second thing, and I would just echo what Tracy said, if you have the ability, not to necessarily get so an expert on Snapchat or, you know, use it all day, but just download it, just get familiar with it so that when you talk to your student, when you talk to your own child, you can use some of the same language, whether it's Snap, whether it's a reel, you know, whatever it is. You know, you're able to kind of speak in that language because I think that also, just generally speaking, fosters trust and you can have those better conversations about concerns that your students or that your kids are facing. So I think generally speaking, that's what I would say.
Yeah, and it actually doesn't take as long as the parents think to become familiar with any of these apps.
Definitely, yep.
Dana?
No notes. I mean, I agree with all of that. I think if you were, if we were so lucky to be invited to the next World Anti-Bullying Forum, I think we would probably have entirely different things to talk to you about. And that is because kids and teens are constantly changing. The way that they show up online is constantly changing. And so it is on us to constantly be adapting to that. So we welcome the feedback. We are constantly trying to find other ways where we can show up in spaces like these and have conversations to understand what are we missing? What do we need to be doing better? What are the tools that we have in TechSpeak shipped that we need to unship? Because they're not actually being used by young people and they're no longer fulfilling the need that we intended for them to. So, yeah, I would just say, I mean, I think we have worked a ton with the Child Mind Institute and they have come up with a set of 10 questions that they recommend parents and adults to have and to ask their teens when talking about online experiences. And a lot of it is just sitting down with them in a nonjudgmental way, not immediately going to like restriction or denial and just kind of understanding what their teens' experience is. Who do you follow? Why do you follow them? What do you like? What do you post? Why do you post what you do? I think that's a really important one, like what's your intention every time you post? So, yeah.
That's how you show love towards someone else. You choose to be interested in what they're interested in. And in this case, it's clearly apps and technology. Finally, Tracy?
Okay, first of all, what I want everyone in the world to know, like please spread the word, but the folks who work on the youth safety and wellbeing teams at TikTok absolutely love teens with all of their heart. You've got moms, right? Uncles, sisters, brothers, people who, former educators, doctors, people who have young people in their lives. And like I, every day, when I come across a feature, a difficult case, a difficult decision, my former students, my cousins, my daughter, those are the people who I think about. And I'm like, what would I do to act in their best interests? And that's what's happening at TikTok for youth safety. I got so many teacher friends. So what do I tell them when they ask me? I'm like lean into, right? When they ask me like, okay, my, you know, my students are using TikTok. What do I do? How do I talk to them? And also my mom friends, I just say, you know what? You've got to just lean into the positivity. It's so easy to fall victim to like worrying about the fear-mongering like media headlines when the reality is there's like a lot of fun and opportunity and education on these platforms. So just like Dana just said a second ago, ask them what they're posting. Ask them what they enjoy. Ask them why. Use this as an opportunity to bond. My teacher friend is calling me right now on my Apple Watch. She needs to talk about that.
I can confirm that's true.
Yeah, like just so, like bond with them. But like, I do, I do think that we need to be using the apps, like to invest and really fully understand the experiences that young people or other loved ones who are not necessarily young people who may be experiencing something like bullying in these digital spaces. Like in order to understand, it is helpful to have some familiarity with that platform. But I would use the entry point opportunities to learn from like, what do you love about it? And you'll probably figure out that the conversation will end with laughter and joy and curiosity and a lot of positivity.
Outstanding. So yes, fun, but also opportunity and as Tracy said, education.
Yeah.
We hope you enjoyed this panel. I'd like you to please give it up for each of them, Tracy, Dana and Raj. Thank you, thank you. You're welcome.